Thank you everyone for coming. Let's turn our microphones on here and test everything, make sure everything's going fine. If everyone would also turn off your cell phones. Let's make sure mine's still on mute. Yep. Microphones are on. All right. Time being nine o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Wanda.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Joe. Joel.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Sherry.
Here. Does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
I do not. I'm none.
No. Item number four is approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox, to approve the agenda. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries. Agenda is approved five zero. This is the time for public comment. Would anyone care to make a public comment at this time? All right, no comments, so public comment is closed. Item number five. We have a partnership form for the Boys and Girls Club. And is this something we do every year? Is this a...
This is just a... I got this email from the gentleman and it's not an every-year thing. I think we've done something like this before, but it's just a partnership for... with Yankton. And you got the letter explaining that?
Yeah.
They're not asking for funds, correct?
No.
They just want to partner with us, pay for grants and things like that.
This is for the grant, that Century Grant.
I think the Boys and Girls Club does great things and I don't see any issue whatsoever with doing this.
Any other comments?
Can we close that door?
I was thinking the same thing.
Just that...
They're having too much fun in the auditor's office.
I'd move that we accept the collaboration and partnership form presented by the Boys and Girls Club.
No second to that.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Clemish, to approve the collaboration and partnership form with the Boys and Girls Club. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. All right, we are at item number six. Comprehensive plan and Article Five Amendment discussion. So we can talk amongst ourselves to begin with, or we can take public comment to begin with. Do we have a preference? By any of the commissioners?
I think it usually goes back and forth.
Okay, so let's start with some public comment. And since this is, the intent is to have public comment, I'm not going to limit you to the three minutes, but certainly don't want you talking three hours kind of thing. So if anyone would want to come up to the podium and speak now, you're welcome to. And please state your name for the record and try to speak into the microphone. If you take your mask down, if you're comfortable doing that, your voice is a little more clear, so. And I'd ask that of the commissioners as well, to speak into your microphone. Thank you. Go ahead.
Chris Sparkle. I submitted a proposal of my own to you guys for Article Five amendments. And I guess I'm not claiming to have all the answers in my proposal, but it's suggestions that I've heard from people in the ag community and what I've kind of accumulated and put together. And I guess what I think, especially after looking at the comparison sheet that was also in the packet, Yankton already has one of the most, if not the most restrictive zoning ordinances towards the ag zoning out of all of the counties presented here. And I think that with all the proposals that have been on the table thus far, it's just been making the restrictions greater and putting more restrictions on just agriculture and not anything else. So I guess I want to present something from the other end, which I feel like a lot of farmers don't feel like they've heard and that their proposals don't actually get put into writing in these other proposals. And I just wanted to present another side to it, so that we're not just talking between current zoning and going more restrictive. There is, you're talking about give and take. The farmers in the other proposals aren't getting anything. And here's a side where there are some things that can be given to the ag community, such as right to farm, different setbacks and restrictions, following more in line with the state guidelines instead of being so restrictive that we're gonna not allow any livestock. And I guess, I don't know if you guys had a chance to read any of it, or if you had any questions for me on it. Otherwise, I guess I will let you guys discuss it.
Why don't you go over some of the points with us, because there is a few interesting things that weren't weren't bad in there, but if you want to go over some of the major stuff, I would sure like to listen to what you have to say.
Sure.
If you want to give me a minute, Chris, I'll get it pulled up. The first one. I'm gonna just jump in and see where we're at. This is probably the first proposal.
No, that's his.
No, that's it.
Yeah, that's it, because it was narrower.
Yep.
Fond.
I suppose you can start it up with the definitions.
Yeah. Probably do similar like what we did with the other ones. I think if you want to highlight some of the...
Yep. So I guess I thought that having definitions, especially I guess when it comes to like animal feeding operations versus CAFOs, that it all kind of means the same thing. And so I would just basically get rid of the two different definitions and just leave it all as animal feeding operation. You can see the class table, basically reduce that pretty dramatically to Class A, Class B. And I guess the units on there aren't a sticking point, but that's where my understanding of the state guidelines are, of where the permits start to be required and different things at the state level start to be required. So basically, Class A would be requiring those those permits and restrictions, and Class B is not.
Chris, on that, the state gets involved at a thousand animal units. So if you have 999, there's no requirement from the state. If you have a thousand, then it's a mandatory requirement from the state. I just wanted to clarify that. I know it. So right now, 300 animal units wouldn't require it. 999 would, a thousand and more would. Just to clear.
I guess where my understanding of that came from is if it was talking about if there was runoff or water near it, then it was at 300 level, but.
Sure.
Anyways, the animal units table is pretty much unchanged, other than just clearing up like Joe did in his, including cow calf pairs. Conversion table, I thought that was redundant and unnecessary, because everybody can do math with animal units. So it's just taking up space. Like I said, the CAFO is pretty much a redundant definition of animal feeding operation.
Can I pause you for a second?
Sure.
That way folks at home can see what you're talking about.
Yep.
Thank you.
Moving on to the permitted special use is basically just something that has a section of restrictions in the zoning ordinance, not necessarily just Article Five, but you could use it anywhere. If you follow those requirements, then you basically have a permitted use. So that's kind of consistent with new state guidelines. Once you get to Article Five, change the intent, because it does read that that the intent of Article Five was to basically limit incompatible uses with agriculture. So I just made that more clear through my new definition, which it pretty much reads the same, just wording slightly different. The right to farm section in here, and I don't know if this is exactly the right place to put it, but and this right to farm, I guess I didn't write it, but I took it. And maybe it needs to be tweaked, maybe not, but basically just people would have to acknowledge the fact that they're in an ag zone district and that the things that go along with agriculture, odors, dust, inconveniences of any sort to do with agriculture.
Oh, I read that now, there's really no grandfathering in of that. So even acreages that were under 20 acres from 30 years ago, now they're not grandfathered in, so they would also have to sign that. Is that correct?
Actually, it reads only if it's transferred.
Well, I mean eventually, everything's going to be sold, though.
Right, so then the new residents or whoever it transferred to would have to sign.
So there's, so there is no grandfathering in?
No, and I guess that's not, the right to farm is more of like an easement or acknowledgement, so it's not really limiting you with anything by having to sign it.
What's the, what is the goal that we're trying to do with the right to farm?
I think that's more of to strengthen the intent of Article Five in saying that this is what's going on in this district, so that's what you need to understand that you're going to live with if you move into such a district. And I...
Should we do that with every district then? That's a residential district, should we have a residential right and then a commercial district? Could have something similar to this, with a commercial, like some commercial rural residential, would you suggest something like this for every district?
Dan, your microphone.
And then to, you know, put something like this on every district to protect the intent of every district? Or just, are we just going to do this?
Well, right now, since we're talking about Article Five, then I'm putting it in here, but the other districts, if you had an issue with it, then maybe that would be something to consider, but the other districts really don't have an issue with someone building in a house next to a commercial district, next to a factory or or a repair business or something, and then complaining about them and trying to put them out of business because of it. You don't have that issue in other districts, just in the ag zone district. So that's why I've included it here. If in the future you had issues, maybe there should be something in those other districts to strengthen the intent and to inform the citizens in those. But as of right now, I don't see that as being an issue.
I, just to play devil's advocate, I'm gonna bring up two very recent issues. One would be cell tower in an R2 district and campgrounds in R2 districts. And I don't think the majority of people go through and see what's permitted in their district they live in until until the neighbor wants to put something that they don't like up. And then, okay, whoa, wait a minute here. And then we've got you know, we've got a room divided and people on all sides of the issue, so. You know, I, not saying this isn't you know, something to look at. I'm just saying it does exist, I guess, throughout other districts.
But not to the extent that it does an ag district.
Would this go on every property in every ag property, or just stuff less than 20 acres?
I would say it'd go on every property.
Every property, so it doesn't, if you own
Wouldn't matter.
A thousand acres or
It doesn't matter.
Three acres.
Right.
Okay. You know, this isn't a perfect solution either. I actually have some friends who live in a county that has that and you know, they've ran into some issues where when you get pesticide drift on farm ground, dicabia being a great example, is this going to limit your ability to get reimbursed for damage by your neighbor? If they, you know, are acting in a way that harms you, you know. And so if we do do this, I'm saying it needs to be very careful, because we all know that, you know, farms are getting bigger. Before too long, we're going to get more large people coming from Iowa and Minnesota. And, you know, that's going to have an effect on the small farms around here, so.
And I guess.
Be careful what you wish for.
Well, I guess my understanding of it is, is that this pertains mainly just to zoning, and if you're following the requirements of it and doing what you should, then you're not going to have an issue there. But when it comes to doing something negligent, then you're still going to be liable. If you're drifting over your neighbors or anything like that, if you're not doing what you should be doing, then there's not much that's going to protect you in that, in that way of going about it. Moving on to permitted uses, basically moving in animal feeding operations that are Class B, so the smaller ones, under 300 animal units.
Those are, those are permitted?
Those would be permitted. And that's consistent with the way the zoning ordinance was actually applied over the years. And there wasn't anybody coming in for conditional use permits for one or two animals. And there was no performance standards for anything smaller than 300 animal units in the past. So this is just clarifying that and making it easier to understand. And if the wording in the old ordinance was making people believe one thing or another, then this should put it into that.
What's the rationale for removing dwellings and manufacturing homes?
Um, so later on in here, I add that back in, under this permitted special uses, where it has requirements and performance standards as well. So that's, like you point out, that's stricken from permitted section. Accessories, pretty much not changed. Permitted special uses, then I have in here, this would be where it's basically, if you follow the requirements of that use, then it becomes permitted. That's where I've got Class A animal feeding operations and the different dwellings.
So you would, your proposal under this, under 506 now, is to have animal feeding operations and CAFOs of unlimited size as a special permitted use. Is that my understanding of you correct?
That's the way this one is.
So if somebody wanted to build 100,000 head feedlot, they wouldn't even have one public meeting? Because a special permitted use does not require any publication, any public meeting or notice. They would just come and see Mr. Vetter, and if it met whatever setback, it would be issued just as a building permit. And, you know, the neighborhood would not even know it was happening until it was over. So I guess I'm wondering why, why the citizens of Yankton County wouldn't deserve to know what's happening in the neighborhood?
Well, when it comes to extreme cases like that, maybe we do need to set up different classes, but for simplicity's sake, this is sure what I've got right now.
And the reason I ask this is because, you know, conditional use by definition is a use that's not appropriate for a district generally, but if controlled as to the size and the number, would promote the safety, health and welfare of the county. And that's what zoning is all about. Safety, health and welfare. Putting the things where they belong and they make the most sense. And is it tough sometimes? Sure, it always is. But if we're not going to require a conditional use permit for an unlimited size animal feeding operation, this could be 100,000 head at this point, but we're going to require it on, you know, a park or a daycare to have the same standards for somebody building a family structure as opposed to that? I just don't think something like that's going to fly with the citizens. And that's just my personal opinion, but.
And like I said, I don't have all the details hammered out in this and all the solutions. And I simplified it so that we can see a different way of going about it.
Sure.
So going on, conditional use is basically moving out animal feeding and the dwellings, because those got moved in the permitted special use. Also spreading injection. It's conditional use, that's also in the performance standards of the of the Class A, so that got moved out of there.
I think the reason, main reason for that is if it's coming from like another county, let's say. And so I think keeping something like that's important, because you could have, you know, a neighboring operation that, that's coming in and I mean, it's more than allowed, I think. If someone has something that they want to spread on our acreage, I'd sure, or our acres, I'd take it, but that's the point, is if you're not covered under basically the Yankton County ordinance and you're coming from somewhere else, just to make sure that acres are assigned accordingly, manure management plans, that kind of stuff.
Right. Lot requirements, didn't change the acreage, took away basically the exceptions to, where it's zoning administered to make exceptions. That's the same with right of way here, minimum yard requirements. Residence requirements. Basically, this would apply to new residences in the ag zone district. I put a minimum setback of two miles from the nearest ag zone land owned by the applicant. And then there's a waiver with that, if you would get your neighbors basically to sign off on that. And the rationale behind that is if I have a field out in the middle of the county and currently there's nobody living around it or anything, and I don't have anything built on it, but say that I have a plan to build there in the future, because these things are so capital intensive, you don't just do it overnight. And if somebody, the neighbor sells a lot across the road, and now all of a sudden my plan goes out the window, because I can no longer locate in the place I wanted to. And the more you spread out residences throughout the county, especially if you would reduce acreage sizes, that pretty much boxes in all the farmers to their current footprint, where they're already at, and doesn't allow for any development for anybody. And either you have to get more concentrated on your existing farm, or don't do it at all. And I don't think that's right. And I think that if you're in the ag zone district, that setback should be on the people that are doing the incompatible use, which residences are incompatible largely with modern agriculture. So
You're saying, I'm gonna interrupt you for a sec. So you're saying you feel, and this is fine how you feel, you say rural residents are incompatible with agricultural uses? I mean, as it is right now, it's a permitted use and living in the country predates any zoning that we have. I mean, you have to live, you know, when my great-grandfather homesteaded in 1885, he lived on the property he was at. And so to say that, how, I guess at what point did it become incompatible for people to live in the country?
Largely back prior to zoning and back when it was homesteaded, everybody was involved in agriculture. And now you've got people coming out wanting a two-acre lot, just to build a house and have their little piece of heaven and want to control everybody around them and stop any kind of development happening around them, because I don't want to see a hog barn, I don't want somebody spraying next to my property or all that. So, and you can tell by the lawsuits recently, that it's not, it's becoming more incompatible every day with more people coming out. So instead of putting the bulk of the requirements and setbacks on the ag producers that are there, trying to make a living, being the largest economic driver in the county, instead of putting the restrictions on them, why not put the restrictions on the new residents that are coming in, which largely are these people wanting a couple acres just to put a house on, and then having the idea that nothing should be built around them?
Can you give me an example where somebody, you know, has gone out and built a new residence in the county and then complained about what was there prior to this? Because I guess I can't think of one. I think there are examples of where people have lived for, in some case, decades and had something, you know, a CAFO, hog barn, for example, we'll just talk about it, move into where they were already, already were, and that caused an issue. But can you give me an example where somebody moved into where you know, there already existed a CAFO, and then there was issues from that?
I guess off the top of my head, I can't give you names and locations, but I do know of different stories where guys have talked about this, where they've sold off of a farmstead or something, the new residents that come in, then they don't, they want to stop, put a stop to anything developing around them.
But that's people.
I think a prime example might be the guy over on the river. Left and moved to Arizona, doctor, his wife's a doctor. You know who I'm talking about.
I, I'm trying, Don. Where at?
South of, south of Gayville, on the river. Pill Town. That's a prime example to me. And there are others I can think of.
Well, didn't they own that property years before?
No.
Anything else out there?
They bought it from a... My understanding was it, my understanding is, is that they bought it from the guy here in town.
I guess, I couldn't speculate.
But there's a lot of, there's a lot of similar examples, I think.
Well, I think, you know, something I think's important for everybody to keep in mind is is that does happen. It, I mean, I don't think there's any you know, any dispute that, yes, somebody could, could live in the country and not be informed in agriculture, and they can complain about agriculture. There's also people, plenty that I know that live in the country, aren't involved in agriculture, and fully support agriculture. And there's also plenty of ag producers and livestock producers that live in the country, have raised livestock their entire lives, and have voiced concerns over what's happened in the past several years, too. And I'll go back. Part of why I feel this ordinance needs changing and updating and not not to be a big power grab or anything, but just clarity. Every time large facilities have either come or proposed to come, there's been major issues. And it goes back to the start of the ordinance, but even after that, in Jamesville Township, there were hog barns going to be built. It was farming neighbors who put up opposition to it. In 2005, in Mission Hill area, when there was CAFOs produced and hog barns produced, it was livestock farming producing families that put up the opposition to that. And most recently, I think it's probably a little different. It's not, it's probably been driven from the different side, but I think it's important to know that I know how you feel, and I know how some of the people in the room feel. And I agree with a lot of the things, and I don't agree with all of the things, but I think it's important to know that this is not a egg producing versus non-egg producing issue. There's livestock producers who feel that there needs to be some clarity here. And there's, you know, non-egg people involved as well, but it's not it's not a guarantee that if you raise livestock, that you want CAFOs all over the county.
Yeah, I understand.
So I think it's important that we know that, I think in, in most of these conversations, everything goes to, you know, these non-farmers versus the farmers, and I don't think that's fair, and I don't think we should focus on that during discussions.
Right, I understand that, and this is just a presentation to show how restrictive, this, you think that this two mile setback sounds extreme. But when you flip it and look at the current ordinance or any of the proposals, for a lot of these facilities, there is a two mile setback if you wanna put up an ag facility.
Right.
Animal feeding operation, so why is it crazy to think of a two mile setback for residents when it's not crazy to think, think of a two mile setback for some kind of ag production facility?
Well, that, that has to do with the potential of the consequences, I mean.
If you wanna talk about the consequences though, you think of somebody puts up a house and the consequences to me as an ag producer is I can no longer use my land to produce an income or to develop it or anything to do with ag in the future, I'm pretty much stopped. So, I mean, you, you're talking about consequences to the residents as well, there's consequences to the ag producers as well.
Right.
And that's what I wanna show with this, and that I don't feel like anybody's thought about or actually put down a solution in any of your proposals to this, because that is a problem. You look at how many residences are out, and even if the residences don't cause a problem, they're not the ones complaining, just by the way the ordinance is written, I can't locate that close to them without having a waiver signed or getting them on board. So what is the problem with having residents have the same kind of requirements on them? And that's what I'm trying to show with this.
And I can appreciate that point, I'm just saying more in general and to people listening and whatever, I just wanna make the point that I, I don't think this is ag versus non-egg. I think, I think there's a lot of a lot of non-egg people who support, you know, it's reducing some of the setbacks and some of that, and there's also egg people who don't, and so to me, that's just a non-issue and we should stick to, to what we're doing. But I, I'm yeah, I'm not trying to
Alright.
pick on just this thing.
Uh, the next performance standard was just sign the right to farm covenant for new residents, which is pretty much the same as like for section five oh two. Moving the additional dwelling on farmstead, same as, as the original ordinance, just moving it to permitted use, and then that would also require the, the waiver setback or right to farm, all that, and then the sewer sanitary system, that's pretty much in every proposal with anything residential.
That's something we all agree on, actually.
Traffic visibility, yeah, that's pretty much the same as, like Joe's just cleaned that up. Animal feeding performance standards, this is just for class A, which so the large, larger facilities basically follows the same kind of things the state requires, site description information with different information about everything that's going on there, facility management plan. Waste management plan. Pretty similar to current ordinance and state. Biggest changes setbacks, which in there for discussion sake, existing residences, basically quarter mile. New residences, no setback, and I know that you're gonna hammer me over that, but reason for that is, like I said again, if I have a plan to build something and new residence moves in, I can no longer do that. So I think that by, if you had where you have to go and talk to your neighbors with the setback requirement to build a new residence, and you have to sign the right to farm, you know that you're moving into an ag zone district, there could be development there that you might have to deal with. So that's where I've come up with no setback for new, from new residences for an ag facility, and maybe that needs to be changed, maybe that's too extreme, but that's another discussion point of how we shouldn't be limiting what ag producers can do in the future because somebody moves in. They should still be able to go ahead with their plan, they should still be able to be, like, I can't make a ten year plan because I've got neighbors all the way around me, and if they're all of age, they could die any day and the land could be sold off and there could be a new house there, and then all of a sudden I can't do what I was planning on doing, so there needs to be something built into the ordinance to address that. And this is my solution to it, but not saying it's perfect.
Is that quarter mile setback for existing residents, is that for just class A or is that for class B as well?
That, since these performance standards are on just class A.
Would you have a setback for B or not?
B would just be the yard requirements.
I'm sorry, what's that?
B would just be the yard requirements.
The seventy-five foot?
Right.
And that's one thing that I think has been real unpopular with everybody is locating these seventy-five feet away from people. I, I mean, I don't, I don't think there are many people who think that that's right. And, you know, maybe you're one and that's fine, I respect your opinion. But I think we could do a little bit better job of putting them where they belong. And the reason being is, one of these types of operations for your nutrient management plan, you have to have X amount of acres, right? Nobody wants to be hauling it ten miles away, cuz it, first off, it's expensive, second off, causes damage to roads. So if you have enough land to build one of these, usually you can locate it further than seventy-five feet away from somebody. Doing the right.
Most people would do that, and
Most people, but
And maybe
Not everybody, right?
Sure, but maybe.
So that's why we need minimum standards here, because not everybody's gonna do the right thing.
Well, I, I, I think we can all think of a really good example. But the, according to that, as I said, seventy-five feet, though. He is seventy-five feet away from
True.
His lot line.
But is that, is seventy-five feet appropriate? And, and animal feeding operations are one of the few things in our zoning ordinance that the planning commission and board adjustment can mandate a setback greater than that. That's the only thing in our zoning ordinance where the planning commission and board of adjustment have the authority to mandate a setback greater than. And just because it's the minimum standard doesn't make it right.
And I guess when you're talking about locating things in the correct place and there's some common sense that goes along with locating new facility, and yeah, there's some bad examples of where somebody's put it seventy-five feet or too close or whatever. There is maybe something we can say or do about changing that in the zoning ordinance to make it more clear of where you can put it, but when you're talking about locating the correct location, zoning ordinance was, and zoning map was set up to try and promote growth in correct areas and separate things that aren't necessarily compatible, that's why you have the commercial district, that's why you have lakeside, you have R one, R two, R three, and you have ag zoning. Well, if you're gonna go out and pockmark the county full of residences in an ag zone and then try and tell everybody what to do, that's not really, that's not really helping the ag community or locating in the correct place. I mean, I'm not able to go and even be considered for an application to put up a animal feeding operation in R one district or R two or commercial district, or even in the rural transitional where I live, I can't go and put up a five hundred head feedlot or anything, nobody's gonna, even, you're gonna laugh me out of the room.
Apply to get it rezoned back to egg, and we've had that happen. I mean, we had one just the other night where a guy rezoned from RT to commercial.
So, I mean, taking that same sentiment, you can rezone a area out if you think that an ag zone area's got a lot of housing and maybe it should be rezoned, so you can put smaller lots on it, rezone it to R one, R two, R three, but don't try and force it onto ag zone just to turn it into another residential lot. I mean, are we gonna, if you wanna go through with some of these proposals with two acres and everybody has to locate a half mile away from everybody else for anything, you're pretty much not gonna have any ag development, and you might as well just rename it R four, we're gonna call it R four district and make it residential, because that's what the proposals do.
Now, these setbacks, that's for facilities, correct?
Right.
Is there anything for the manure application?
No, I don't have that broken out in here. And that would probably
Thoughts on, I mean, if it, if you purposely didn't do that, or if it just?
It wasn't something that I spent a lot of time on with the manure application part, I figure you're going to do that with a with the manure management plan and everything that you're gonna submit, so. Maybe it needs to be broken out, but then all the places that's been broken out in other proposals, it's saying things like, oh, don't apply it on a, after this time or after that time, and don't apply it on these certain days, and it's getting into micromanaging everybody, so where you can't hardly do it. So I didn't put that in there, cuz I think you can put that as part of your nutrient management plan and maybe there needs to be a review process for it, but more, more freedom to do it, how things need to be done, and that's that's the thing with, that a lot of people don't understand about doing everything with modern agriculture is, you don't have you don't have any incentive to do things wrong anymore, really. When it comes to applying humanure or whatever, for example, you're gonna do it in the most economical way that gives you the best rate of return, you're not gonna just go dump it down the creek or oh, I don't feel like spreading it out over two hundred acres, I'm gonna put it on fifty acres, and then it's all gonna leach down and pollute the opera for whatever, you're not gonna do that because you're gonna lose money. And as far as economics go in agriculture, your total incentive is, and margins are so tight, your incentives do everything correct way, and micromanaging on the county's part, I don't think is helpful to anybody.
I agree with most of that. With the exception, we had a gentleman standing right there in late summer of twenty nineteen who had two pits full and knew his alfalfa ground was gonna flood and had to get rid of his manure, so he went out and spread it on top of the alfalfa ground, so the flood would come take it away. And he stood right there and said that's what he did. So it doesn't happen often, but it does happen. Yes?
I know the situation you're talking about, because I can remember the gentleman.
You might wanna stand up for the folks at home.
I remember him stating he knew that ground would flood. But anyway, and I know, the, the point, I guess my point is, I agree with you, the economics are gonna drive the majority of this. There are situations, and that's part of, part of like getting a state permit, is what's the contingency plan? They force you to come up with this contingency plan for something that's, that's gonna happen and identify places, if, if you're in the situation, what, you know, where could you go put this on top of the ground? Or if the ground's frozen to do this. And they don't say you can't do it, but they say you need to plan for that.
Right, and providing a nutrient management plan is part of the requirements on this. It just doesn't say you can't do it on this day or that day, and that you have to stay so far away from whatever.
Right.
That's part of the plan, and maybe you have a general layout of a plan that, where you have different things you wanna see in it, but actually micromanaging in the zoning ordinance itself.
One of the problems, Chris, is that the D E N R has different rules than, than the counties do. And if a nutrient management plan meets D E N R requirements, they sign off on it, even if those requirements are different than the county, because we have setbacks for, you know, the Missouri River has a setback, the James River has a setback. D E N R doesn't look at those, and so if their setback is less than the county is, and you follow that plan, technically you're in violation of the county ordinance. And so they don't look at each other, and so that's why, that's the point of the conditional use is that you have a D E N R plan, but it also has to meet the county requirements and.
What other things would you like to share, just in general?
I guess that's pretty much my whole proposal, and like I said, it doesn't have every solution in it. And I think that the conversation needs to be had where ag community is actually getting some kind of protection or getting something out of these ordinances instead of all the burden coming down on the ag community, and there's no protections in there for us, where it's just piling on more and more restrictions and gets more complicated, and I don't see how that helps any of us out here.
I don't disagree, but I, I would, so on what, I'm gonna say my proposal, and it's not, it's a compilation of some input, but on that one, and I, I'm gonna compare it to what we're, where we're at today. Right, cuz you would, I won't even get it on the background, but from what we have today to what's proposed, what has gotten more stringent on the producer?
It's, I think it's becoming more complicated with having different classes. Putting lot sizes down to two acres is going to cause more problems, cuz you have more residents out in the county. You increase a lot of the setbacks and, which basically puts, if you put a circle around every residence or every municipality and then you put it up on the map, there's not a lot of places that you're gonna actually be able to locate.
Right.
And so it just becomes more and more restrictive.
And I, I wanna, I wanna note setbacks and the acreage sizes are, it should just be a question mark in that proposal, cuz that is absolutely up for discussion, but.
But what I'm saying is the, the the conversation that's being had with, say, like your proposal, is not going from what we currently have to something more friendly towards ag, it's going from what we currently have towards something less friendly towards agriculture. So that's where my proposal, I'm trying to show that there's another side where it can be more it can be more friendly towards ag, and that it's not just a discussion of what we have now to becoming more restrictive.
Under your proposal, let's say I live in a residence that's already there and I've lived there for ten years. And then you're there and you don't have any feeding operation, but then you sell your that parcel of land to Miss Lily, and Miss Lily decides that she wants to put up a class A animal feeding unit under your proposal that has not five hundred animals, but twenty-five thousand animals. What, what in your proposal protects me because I lived there first?
I guess the only thing that's in mind right now is quarter mile setback with that, since you were existing residents. And like I said, maybe there's something that we need to do with these extreme cases, like a giant feedlot of twenty-five thousand or something, but that's not something, one of the details I've hammered out in this. But, like I said, it's just what I've got down on paper right now is quarter mile. But like I said, it's just what I've got down on paper right now is quarter mile.
I, I think one of, one of the important things to remember with the special permitted uses, if we go down that road, is that all the details have to be hammered out because it goes to Mr. Vedder and he has to make a decision based on what the ordinance says to the letter. And if there's no setback there, here's your permit and it's a done deal. The benefit of having conditional use permits and public hearings is that those things can be worked out. You know, if it's, if it's not spelled out to a T in the zoning ordinance, which most things aren't, that can be rectified in a public hearing. It can't be rectified as a special permitted use. And so that's, I think, one of the, the big dangers of special permitted uses.
And I guess, again, going over my point is, uh, maybe you need another class and it says up to a thousand animal units or whatever is a special permitted use. And then if you're getting like these twenty-five thousand head units or a hundred thousand heads, you need a conditional use. But, um, I guess that's not, I didn't, like I stated at very beginning that I don't have every detail in here like you're trying to coax out of me right now.
Class, class size is tough and I was hoping you'd solve that for us.
And, and I think we certainly, we understand your perspective and certainly appreciate everything you've presented today, um, because that's what we're after today. Any other questions for Mr. Barkle? We've made him stand up here about thirty minutes.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, you gotta get on firing squad.
Did you have a question, Don, or just a general?
I, I got a statement, just to keep things a little bit in perspective. And, and perhaps I'm wrong, but we talked, Joe talked a little bit about spreading manure on the alfalfa field. Wasn't it the same flood that, uh, the, uh, Gayville, uh, No Mission Hill Lagoon overflowed and, and went down the Blue Creeks, Blue-
The Blue Lines?
Blue Lines, yeah.
I believe it might have been, but I guess I don't-
Don, I talked to the mayor of Mission Hill and that's not actually accurate at all, what happened.
Oh, I don't believe that.
And, and well, look at DENR because they did have, uh, they, they have an NPDES permit, which allows for discharge under certain-
But does it make it right then?
Well-
Does it make it right?
It's, it's legal.
The same situation.
And that's, that's my point is that, lack of better word, maybe I better not say it, but it happens.
Yeah.
And, and-
And if, if you're gonna regulate to the point that you, you make sure nothing can happen that can be a disaster, then close it up because-
Yeah, and I'm not saying-
All economic growth and development is gone.
I'm not saying you do that. I, and part of that is, is there's gonna be times where, where you, you have no other choice and, and they're called disasters for a reason. The point is just to put, you need to plan for disasters. Not everyone plans for a disaster.
Thank you, sir.
Alright. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Other folks care to come to the podium and share your thoughts? Sure, come on up. Please state your name and, um, yep, go ahead. You're free to do that. Thank you.
Dale Load, uh, four four three one seven three hundred and third street. I disagree with the quarter mile because I have a hog barn a third of a mile from me right now and currently probably three days out of seven that I smell the hog smell really bad. My wife is not happy. We probably won't get what we expected if we ever sell. I'm gonna probably be coming back to you for, for decreasing my taxes because this is not right. Because I, I disagreed with it in the beginning. Nothing was done. It passed through and now I smell it all the time. I have more sinus problems. My dogs are more sick. Everything's more sick. I've had more rabbits die this year than ever before. It's just what happens. Thank you.
Dale.
Dale.
You have a barn gonna be possibly built seventy-five feet from your property too, don't you?
Correct. And if that goes through, it's gonna be worse.
Dale, is you, are, do you live in an ag zoned area?
The whole areas, yes.
So what does that mean, Don, that he shouldn't, he should be treated? He doesn't, you don't have any rights then. Is that what that means? What is, what does that mean?
Yeah, it doesn't mean that at all. It, all it means is he's in a zone that's zoned for agriculture and it has certain requirements.
And he has a residence which is a permitted use, right?
It's been there twenty-six years.
He's been there twenty-six years. He has a hog barn going seventy-five feet away from him.
No.
That's a condition. Well, seventy-five feet from his property. So, you know, this is an example of how I think we could do a better job. I, I was at that meeting where they did that and it could have been moved further, it could have been moved further away. Okay, but it was-
And Don, even yourself said this wasn't, you should get together with, with cuts and decide how this should go because he's, you said yourself, can't you move it half a mile down the road? And he wouldn't do that. So you should have been the deciding vote there and said, no, this is not happening. It's not right.
Get sued.
What?
And then get sued.
It's not right. You know, you have all these, these, these-
The rest of the taxpayers of the county gotta pay the cost of the lawsuit.
You have all these tight regulations. If you wanna have tight regulations, then you need to follow.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Teachout and I live at three nine oh two Whiting Drive here in Yankton, which is a rural residence and I believe it is agriculture. I wanna thank you for what all you're doing. I know it's not easy. But a couple of points of information that I would once again like to share is, if you listen to the news, our Lewis and Clark Recreation Area topped over one million visitors.
Slow down, speed racer.
Okay. Anyway, Lewis and Clark Recreation Area last year topped over one million visitors. I think the one thing we agree on is economic development. What outstanding economic development that is to have a clean recreation area. And I can honestly tell you, I have heard many people that love to come over here because they're leaving Iowa and the problems that Iowa has with the air and the water quality. It's a big boost for Lewis and Clark and I hope we can continue to maintain the quality of that recreation area, not only for our South Dakota residents, but also for the visitors that it brings in. A couple of concerns that I have as a rural resident is, you know, I understand economic development, but without bonding, what production do I have living on the James River with almost a mile of riverbank on my property? What if there is a huge spill from one of these barns? Is someone going to assist me with that cleanup or is that going to be my responsibility? That's a question I've never had answered. I can tell you, I've, I've done my research again. When all of this was initiated a number of years ago, there was a large ad in the paper put together by sponsors of industrial farming and our Yankton Area Progressive Growth that stated how much additional tax money would come from the purchase of pharmaceuticals through local veterinarians and how much tax money would be generated by local veterinarians and their increased business. I challenge you to look at that. I have not been able to identify from any of the resources that any of that has ever occurred. It's all been sourced out to other people. And I was driving north of Huron a couple of weeks ago and I drove by a large animal feeding operation and it was surrounded by pine trees, several rows of pine trees and a fence. The same thing that you have required of the campground that has gone in on Highway fifty-two on the way to Lewis and Clark Recreation Area, which I think is outstanding. But when I attended previous meetings, I heard promises over and over, even producers being called Johnny Appleseed, that they were going to landscape and plant trees, not only for the aesthetics, but to save the residents from the additional dust and the additional fumes. I haven't seen one tree planted around one of the existing large animal facilities. So I don't know if that is going to be enforced. I don't know if that's going to occur, but there certainly is a big difference when you drive north of Huron and see the pride in that community and the county that they have taken to put on that landscaping. And then I drive from Vermillion to Yankton and I have not seen that, nor many of the other rural areas. So I think that needs to be a mandate in the future and I hope there is some corrective action that can be taken for the promises that were made and the lack of action on that. So I thank you. I know we all share a lot of the same common goals. We want Yankton to be a successful community. We know we need money for our roads and, and everything and it is a very challenging task. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Other comments? Anyone cares to share today?
Well, my name is Kathy Hanson and I just, you know, I know that this is so hard for the committee, but I really appreciate the work you're doing. I just want you to know that I am supportive of agriculture production in Yankton County and in South Dakota. My husband and his family farmed for many years of our marriage and I understand many of the farmer's needs. It's a good noble life that we all benefit from. I, I don't know a lot about the right to farm law, but seems what I've read has not a lot of restrictions on industrial livestock and poultry production. And, um, I'm very aware of all the KFOs.
Would you pull the, the microphone down a little bit?
Sure.
Much better.
Oh, okay, sure. So I'm very aware of the many KFOs in our area. I drive to Minnesota to see my daughter and family and they're all over the place. And rarely do I see a lot of trees around them. I think that's a great idea. I have really enjoyed this last, um, the landscape by my house. I go walking almost every day into the woods. It's under where Don lives. And I just think, oh, I'm so grateful that I have a place to go and breathe the fresh air and it's beautiful. And I really don't want Yankton County to be polluted and the air to be polluted. But I drive through places where it's very clearly polluted and that is because of the KFOs. And some of them have, you know, fifteen holes, if you know what I mean. They're that big and some of them aren't, but yeah, I'm, I'm not seeing, I'm just concerned about our environment and I'm so glad to live in Yankton County and I just wanna keep it, the air clean and, uh, groundwater clean and. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other comments?
Louis Johnson, Ballin', South Dakota. In the answer to the manure pollution that everybody's so concerned about, when we pump out a pit, it amounts to a pop can full of liquid manure every other year, ounces per square foot. Terrible, but you look at the analysis of the manure and out of a nursery, ninety-six percent or more is water. So the water out of there, that leaves four percent of the sixteen ounces that's actual manure. Uh, and if that's knifed in and we catch a rain, there's a minimal amount that's gonna run off. I'm not gonna say nothing will because I'm sure it does. But then I've seen where people take and clean out their cattle yard or their barns and they go out in the winter time when it's frozen, they spread it over the top of the ground and there's no way you can work it in, but it's a great way to spread it because it's out of the building, out of the yard and out of the way. Come spring, we get a one-inch rain. A one-inch rain puts like three and a half gallons per square foot of water on. So I'm thinking that manure that's laying on top of the ground that was considered a dry manure rehydrates and is probably runs faster than the stuff that was knifed into the ground. And the comment about the setback having to be greater, that individual has livestock. He cleans out his barn and he dumps his manure in a wetland. And I drive out there a lot and now the wetland is pretty much all dried out, but two years ago it was just about up to his barn. Matter of fact, he moved his manure pile after it dried up this last year. And I guess the thing that gets me, he wants a quarter mile setback from somebody else's property or residence, but his livestock is right up to his property line. He's inches away from the neighbor with his livestock. So why does it work one way but not the other? And I am a very firm believer in the fact that we need a right to farm in the county because if we don't have that, I can remember several years ago, one of the higher-ups in Yankton was complaining. He was embarrassed to bring his wife into town from the east because you had to drive past all that damn farm equipment. And he just thought that was an eyesore for people coming to visit. Short history lesson, back in the thirties or forties, there was thirty-three grocery stores in Yankton and somewhere I've got an ad saying that they all got together and voted that they would be closed on Sundays. We have two now, three with the Mexican one. What happened to them? Everybody wants more grocery stores. Oh, we gotta have more grocery stores. They couldn't make a living. In nineteen eighteen, the average size farm in the whole state of South Dakota was four hundred and seventy-some acres. In twenty eighteen, it was right at fifteen hundred. So there was a whole bunch of farmers that got displaced because they couldn't make a living. And everybody, and I realize the quality of life, oh my God, we gotta get rid of these terrible things because all of this meat's going to China. Now, I don't know where the meat at Hy-Vee and Walmart comes from, if we're sending it all to China. And yeah, I feed pigs for an integrator, a Scandinavian out of Canada. Where they go after that, they go to Waterloo because they're organic, or drug-free, excuse me, drug-free. And they get a premium for having drug-free pigs. And they can get one thing that they don't get from a guy that raises fifty or a hundred pigs a year. They know that they can get in five thousand head that day for that day's harvest that's consistent. So if you buy a pork chop today, it will have the same consistency as one that you buy six months from now. And people love consistency. If you don't believe me, that's, you know, Burger King, McDonald's. They all strive for consistency because you don't wanna eat one, one place is delicious and one someplace else it's crap. And the only way you get consistency is to have set guidelines. As far as economic development goes, Parson Green was looking at Yankton County to set up a three million dollar feed mill. With all the opposition, Tabor got it. I believe it's West to Tabor. And these people, all, all the arguments that came on about how terrible they are, tourism's up. You'd think with all these hog buildings on the highways, why, you know, nobody would come to Yankton, but apparently that didn't affect tourism. The fact that trees being planted, I can show you just about every, no, not just about every, eighty percent of the buildings that went up had trees planted by them. And I'm not gonna say that the ones that didn't have trees planted by them, they- And I'm not going to say that the ones that didn't have trees planted by them, they may go in this year. I do know that the producers were scrambling, because they had a lot of money invested, and they couldn't use it till the lawsuits were settled. But that's neither here nor there. So worrying about the trees was their last thing.
Do you have trees?
Pardon?
Do you have trees?
I built mine in my yard. I have the existing grove that was there for my father or grandfather planted a lot of them, and my great-grandfather planted some before that. My son's barn has three rows of trees on the north side of it that my dad planted in about nineteen seventy. We have no trees on the south side of his barn. I don't know if he's going to or not. But we have existing trees that we are using, because both of our barns are on the place where we live. And we have only had one neighbor complain. And she complained once about the horrible smell from mine, and that was the week before I had pigs in it. And then she came into a meeting and raised holy hell about my sons, and wanted him arrested, thrown in jail, and fined. And when the smoke cleared, they found out that he was completely legal with everything he'd done. And she has never talked to either one of us. But making it so strict, I don't see any other business being regulated. And if we ban caveos, I for one am not going to go back to trying to raise ten thousand head of pigs with a pitchfork and scoop shovel in a five-gallon bucket. I'm too old. And I read the quality-of-life sites where the Sierra Club gets in, and they talk about, well, geez, let's make friends, take meat out of the equation. We'll save the environment. We'll do this. We'll do that. I don't know what they're going to do with the meat, just shoot it and let it rot, and replace it with vegetables. You know, person live on whatever he has to live on. I personally like meat. And now, Dan, you had, Jim River had the Sierra Club test the water in the county a year ago, correct?
They actually never, they never did that, no. They were authorized too, but with the pandemic, they never did it.
No, I thought that Guy Larson and his assistant were up at Mayfield, and they went through and explained what the water test was. I did
I couldn't, I couldn't speak for that.
Oh, because I heard the most contaminated water, according to that meeting, was Marn Creek. And it was polluted at the north end where it came into Yankton, and it was four or five times more polluted at the south end where it left Yankton. And you were talking about the Mission Hill getting drained when the lagoon filled up? City Yankton has done that. Dumped it right in the river. And I mean, it happens. And I for one, the manure is a wonderful, wonderful asset, because of the natural fertilizer, because of the micronutrients, the trace elements, the stuff that you can't afford to buy in commercial fertilizer. And I can bring several people in that have not, don't have a caveau, but some of them have gotten manure from a caveau. And one particular person told me that, geez, where they had the manure knifed in, the corn was like twenty bushels better. And that's profit dollars. And profit gets spent. But I, and I have to agree, and I shouldn't say the two-acre thing should be dead, because I've already had two guys approach me about doing two-acre developments across the road from certain people's houses, so they can put into trailer parks, so they can enjoy having two-acre building sites with somebody's little slice of heaven right across from their house. And is it kind of a way to get back at them? Yeah. And as far as the farmers that hate the caveos, have you ever heard of the word jealousy? I'm not going to do it, so you shouldn't be able to, too. It's a lot easier. Misery loves company, and Yankton County has got to be the prime example of jealousy. Anybody that makes a living, goes out and does better than anybody else, is a crook. Not because he's innovative or has great ideas or is a hard worker, he's just a crook. And I don't see we're tightening it up to make everybody as unprofitable, is the word? Okay. Well, geez, I only made ten thousand dollars, so nobody should make over ten thousand. So let's ramp this down, so nobody can. I don't care about the guy out late, because I don't know him. I attended bar in DJ's in Volin. The owner, Dennis, bought a Corvette. Drank too much one night, told his stepson, you cut your hair, I'll give you the Vette. And he did. And Dennis followed through with his promise, and he went out and bought another Vette. I ran into a regular customer of Dennis's. And I said, God, I haven't seen you over there having supper. Well, anybody that could afford to buy two Corvettes in one year. And one was like a seventy-four, and the other one was an eighty. He said, if you can afford to buy two Vettes, I'm not going to give him my money. And I said, well, you usually have the four ninety-nine steak sandwich, if I remember right. And I said, now, I bet you go to town. And I named the restaurant, and you have theirs. And he goes, well, I do. And I said, you, that guy's got seven Vettes. What? And I said, you don't even know them. So what difference does it make? But he refused to go to a guy, because he'd spent his money the way he wanted to. I don't think we need to regulate everything to death. The one regulation, again, go with some kind of right to farm to protect the farmers in an ag district. I have read through the list of things you can do in an ag district, and raising livestock at an economically viable level is not one of them. You can have bars, you can have cemeteries, you can have campgrounds, shooting ranges, you can have all of this stuff. But, oh, no, no, we want to keep you under a hundred head of livestock, or fifty, even be better. And I'm just guessing that a lot of those smaller operations are way more polluting than the large ones. Because as far as, and as far as the dust goes, I live on the gravel road that goes to Mirandole, and I can tell you, I get more dust in my place from people with kayaks and four-wheelers going up to Mirandole Dam to screw around than I do from all the livestock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Louis, question. Early in your presentation, you mentioned the comparison of somebody could raise a hundred head of pigs versus the modern
Yeah.
model, which probably has thousands. Would you have any estimate of how many operations there are in the state of South Dakota that raise a hundred head of hogs? Be pretty close to zero.
I wouldn't even begin to guess that, because the main thing there is, forty years ago, you had the North Sale Barn, you had Stockman's, and you had Frick Hog Buying Station. Now there is no place in Yankton County to sell a pig. I think you have to go to mental, if you want to sell a live hog. And when you lose your market, if you're going to haul ten pigs, and you got to haul them a hundred miles, there's no money. And contrary to what people think, that farming is a way of life, farming is a business, if you want to survive, if you want to expand, if you want to grow, and if you want to have something for the next generation. Now, this week for us was a hectic week. Monday, I had jury duty in the morning. I got done at eleven. I made it back to my place. We loaded the pigs out of the nursery. I made it for the last two loads. It was myself, my son, and my granddaughter. And I made it for the last twelve hundred head that we loaded. Then went to son's place, and he took out two loads of fats. And then we had to pressure wash my barn, because we got twenty-one hundred head in on Wednesday night, and the barn had to be cleaned, disinfected, and warmed up. And everybody talks about forty-year-old technology. I had Caesar and Pedro show up with their computer, and they hooked it up into the wiring in my barn, and the computer counts the pigs as they come off the truck, to keep the head count straight. Now, forty years ago, when I raised pigs, we didn't have the computer with the little eye in the sky. The technology is unreal. We handled just about five thousand head of hogs this week, in and out. So if you're going to do that, and the nice thing about that, five thousand head of hogs is not enough for one shift at Seaboard in Sioux City. Wilson Trailer builds, I found this out from one of the employees out there, a ton of trailers for Seaboard in Sioux City. The guy, the main trucker that hauls our pigs, has bought thirty or forty pots from Wilson Trailer. I'm thinking that's economic development for the community, because Wilson Trailer buys extruded aluminum from heat drill. And I don't know how many people work there. I don't know how many people work at Wilson's. I have done work in the parking lot, and for other things, down at Simples. It is unreal, the amount of livestock that come and go out of there, and the amount of people that work there. And I know there's people that want to get rid of Stockman's, and they want to get rid of Simples, because it smells bad. So, you know, as long as you don't work there, it's no big deal. But if you lose your job, and you got no place to go, because everybody else is downsizing, it doesn't work. Anyway, I know I didn't answer your question, Don, but I don't know. It would
It's almost zero.
One north of Mayfield.
One?
One I know of.
Raises a hundred head of hogs a year.
A lot that raises less than that.
For the finisher, I believe so. It'd be pretty unusual.
It's nothing like it used to be.
Any other questions, Don?
No.
Okay. Thanks, Louis. Thank you.
Okay.
Other comments? Anyone care to share?
Robert Fran, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I've lived, I'll be seventy-four years in April. I've lived in Yankton County, lived here. Farmed for quite a few years, until eighties, or when things got bad, did. So I went and went into construction business, carpentry and such. And I enjoyed it. My dad did it. When we were on the farm, we built buildings for years. My ancestors had built it. Were living on farm. I believe it was in the eighteen seventies. And it was, we had that farm before they put the railroad from Yankton to Sioux Falls, because grandpa sold, that was actually sold. It was sold with warranty deed to the city of Yankton. So I know what's been going on around here for a long time. And agriculture has been what is, makes Yankton County work. And it used to be Volin, Mission Hill, Utica. There were some places, two grocery stores in Volin. There was two grocery, two or three grocery stores in Mission Hill. There was a couple in Utica, Leesterville. That's when it was small acreages, and when, the hundred pigs. That's Wade. You did, you had pigs, chickens, milk cows. I can remember when we went up to Superville, when we would come to town. You'd take the eggs. You'd drive to the south door. You dropped the eggs off. You went down to the creamery on Broadway here. You dropped the milk, the cream, cream, not the milk, the cream, there. Mom would go in, would shop, time she was done shopping, because she took time. And you'd talk to them, and they'd come up with the egg check. And it paid for a good part of the groceries. And then, when you went down to the creamery on Broadway here, that was the big treat, because you got to go in and have a malt. Because you came to town one, one day, one trip a week coming to town. And you came in there, and that was the treat for kids, you know, because you got a malt, a strawberry malt. Times are changing. There aren't, most people, probably, most people in here, like me, we've probably been to town once or twice already today, and they'll be here three, four more times this week, for sure. And there's hardly any, there may be one or two that raise a hundred hogs, feral, ten sows. But that's pretty rare. And some of those people actually will butcher. That's, there's some people, farmers, who actually will do butcher, or they'll take three or four pigs, and they'll haul them to one of the butcher shops around which are complete panic. Now, this last year, because you can't get, talked to a guy yesterday, and he went and paid for his deer that he had processed up, ways up north. And he says, oh, wow, you'll probably be ready for deer next year, or maybe get a pig or something. He says, no, I am booked up through twenty twenty-three. And that's within forty, fifty miles here. But it's very, very hard to find anything. And like Louis was saying, most of the processing plants, now they go five thousand a day, like Sioux Falls, Sioux City and that. But they have to have product coming in, so they can do it. And it doesn't work if you got about five hundred guys that are bringing ten pigs in. It's pretty tough. That's what we used to do when forty, fifty years ago. But then it was at Frick's Hog Buying Station, people from three, four counties around here came in and brought them in. They put them together, and then they shipped them to the big, bigger packing plants back then. But they weren't putting that kind of, they were probably maybe doing five hundred or a thousand a day. So agriculture is changing, changing and changing drastically. And sometimes one thing, corn was, corn has come back a little bit. Now, beans have come back for quite a few years, twenty, thirty years. A lot of it was A lot of it was just grain sales. Forty, fifty years ago, it was almost all of the grain, the corn and the oats were put through the livestock. Now it's starting to come back again. Up until this last year, I mean, when corn went, was down three, a couple, three dollars. And then it went up to five bucks. That made the difference. But it's still tough to get a good profit on it. But the livestock and the efficiency on the livestock is just unbelievable. And you don't, there used to be a twenty-acre pen, like out my area, there was cattle, but they generally ran about three hundred fat cattle. And that is where, when they were doing this, they came up with a lot of these numbers for thing, because three hundred head covered the average family car, you know, cow calf guy or feeders, and they were doing that. That's why there was numbers. And now when you look at, now we're talking animal units. So you have, it's quite a change because a cow calf, the animal unit, what is a small pig is what, like, takes almost a hundred of them. Or is it twenty-three? But they're, so the animal unit, so it sounds like a huge number. But if you had ten sows, you would always hope to do a hundred head of pigs. So if, you know, a ten pig average, well, now you have weather conditions and everything, so you have them inside. They're cared for. You turn them two or three times because a building is more expensive, you have to be able to turn it. So that's probably a big part of what we have here. Now, the biggest part is when the zoning came out and livestock became a conditional use. And I thought, in the first fifty years of my life, that was the basis. The whole economy here, you had two, three livestock markets. You had three, four elevators. Every little town had an elevator that supported two, three people, made the feet. That's what we were doing. And I thought, now, why, what's wrong here? Because somebody that started on this zoning, cuz they were worried about a ten thousand head cattle feeding operation coming in and it was gonna destroy the world, as obviously always it does. But they put it there, but on the actual practical units, the two-hundred-and-fifty-head to two-ninety-head, that fit in for most family farms. I mean, actually, there was dozens of them in cows. Along where I lived, there was eight, eight building sites there. Now there's six dogs and eight horses. Where there used to be two thousand head of fat cattle being fed. And probably another five thousand head of hogs were being fed. Because they usually went together. It's very critically important that you keep in mind that one, two-acre piece, as you're trying to put in to, when you're pushing out to the huge setbacks, one, two-acre can shut down a whole section of property. Oh, one and six, six-hundred-and-forty acres, the two happens to be in the middle of it on a half-mile setback, they can shut that whole section down. And if it was being farmed, but they complained about the farming too. It's, it's, we have to keep a right to farm your land the way you choose. As long as it's reasonable, and there's regulations that do it. The livestock industry now, the technology on that is so unbelievably in the manure. Not a bit of it runs off. It is encased. And it was all, it is all now put back on the land properly. And it has to be tested. It has to be applied, injected. The regulations are quite extensive. Now, like the one case of the hog manure on the alfalfa is called an emergency because his pit was full. And he didn't apply it because it was gonna rain. He applied it because it was literally full. Now, months before that, the city of Mission Hill, they use the exact same thing because if they get an emergency, if they can't handle it to get it out to their lagoon, they are allowed to dump it in the creek, which is right where the pump is. And they do that in an emergency, just like the city of Yankton does the emergency in the Missouri River. But this is in the creek in Mission Hill.
Okay, I'm gonna, I talked to Jack Stevens about it and he's
Yeah, I know you did.
And it is, is treated water that was discharged. It was not raw manure. If you want, I can have Mr., the mayor of Mission Hill come in because what you're saying is not true.
I
There was a D E N R violation, but that was against Lee Ann Cuts, who is the clerk of the town cuz she didn't do the paperwork properly. So I don't think it's fair that you're here disparaging the town of Mission Hill because that did not happen.
See these
And I think that's wrong. Then you should have filed a D E N R report on it.
Yes.
You should have done that.
Because I was
It's not fair that you're going after a town when they're not here to
Person speak at a time.
To defend themselves, cuz that did not happen.
How about we just move on?
Okay. I, well, I was walking in it, helping sandbag a house that was being surrounded by it. So we did not have time to call the D E N R, which we should have. And there was another fifteen or twenty of us there. We spent half a day sandbagging because the, was running into the basement, running into his garage and so forth. But we didn't take pictures and we didn't do it down there. But, so therefore it didn't exist. That is, that is the biggest problem we have. Because nobody cooperates, works with anybody, helps anybody anymore. Except there was twenty of us down there helping a neighbor save his house, save his buildings. And that's what agriculture and farming is about. It's not about somebody from Sioux Falls or the other side of Yankton that gets all upset because it's gonna get so smelly. It doesn't, it doesn't go ten or twenty miles. The smell doesn't. I mean, I have some that are a hundred and ninety-six feet from a guy's house. And I go over there and I visit with him quite regularly. And it's never been a problem. Neighbors down the road, it hasn't been a problem, but it's mostly just people don't wanna get along, want to shut down agriculture in Yankton County. And I've listened to it for too long and it's detrimental to Yankton County. Agriculture is very important. And when we did that zoning, the rural, the buildings and all that, they got about a third of the, third of the county. And then agriculture is for the rest. And we have to keep it open to agriculture. Not to houses that and the thing is, if you had a hundred and sixty acres, that would eliminate all of that. But when you get it down to two acres, because the banks will not give them more money for that to build a house out in the country. If you had to have a hundred and sixty acres, that's right at about a million, close to a million dollars now, just for the land. But you will let two acres control that million dollars or four million dollars of land or that surrounds it. And that's not right. That's why there should be a right to farm. And I believe there was when they started this zoning in the early parts. And then I think it got slipped out. When they, when six, eight, ten years ago, when there was kind of a oopsie, when they changed things and it didn't, it wasn't done correctly, so it had to go back again. But just keep that in mind now. It's very important. There are so many things to do it. But keep in mind, agriculture is a very, in an egg district. I'm not saying out at the lake or anything, but in an egg district, for God's sakes, let's keep it for agriculture and protect the agriculture. That is the most important thing. Cuz right in the headline on the zoning that started, that is to protect agriculture and agricultural district. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? All right. It looks like there are no more comments at this time, so and we are about quarter to eleven. In the packet, if anyone is curious, we do have the copy of Mr. Barkle's proposal, his letter to the commissioners. We do have a reformatted version of our ordinance. Some changes are included in there. Vast majority of it is exactly what we've got today, just reorganized. Let me pull up and get my other documents. There were some letters submitted to the commissioners before this meeting. We tried to include them in the packet as well. I did have a couple that were submitted after the deadline for publishing the packet. We will be sure that anyone who sends written correspondent to a commissioner, please forward it to Gary to include in the record. So we have everybody's input for everyone to read.
We should give them Gary's email over this, over the, so people listening at home knows.
Yep, good point. So it's gary@co.yankton.sd.us. So that's gary@co.yankton.sd.us. And so you're welcome to forward that. Like I said, if you get something through the Intuvia website, please forward it to Gary so he can include that. There have been a few that have requested. We read them into the record. We decided, it was last year, I believe, that we were not going to read documents into the record. But we will certainly provide that as a public document for anyone to read. Did you wanna go over some things, Joe, here, or did you?
I don't know. I just was grabbing this cuz you started back into the packet, so
Okay. So now, part of that packet was the zoning office did go through other counties. Shoot, I already have that open. Other counties' information, and they did make like a spreadsheet grid form to walk through where their current minimum lot size is, some of the classes for animal feeding operations they have in their county. They did walk through some of the setbacks that were included with those. So yesterday, I looked at that information. And then I went and read the vast majority of all of those ordinances, all of their egg-zoned requirements. So I'm just gonna touch on a few things I, I think are important to our conversation here. So I'm going to list the minimum KFO or AFOL, however you wanna say it, that needs a conditional use permit. So in Beetle County, they started a thousand animal units. In Brookings, they started a hundred. Brown is three hundred. Cottington is a thousand. Davison is five hundred. Lincoln is five hundred.
Important to note
Mini Haha is two fifty.
Can we have one person speak at a time?
Mini Haha is two fifty. Yankton, I guess it kinda depends on who is interpreting the ordinance. My interpretation is one. There are some folks who believe three hundred is where you need a conditional use permit. It depends on how you interpret the word ant. Clay County, I'm gonna skip cuz I didn't get to theirs. And I didn't get to Hutchinson. And then Turner County is a thousand. So that's where they start the requirement for a conditional use permit. But they do have, most of these counties do have essentially a permitted special use category. So manure application is usually part of that special category. You don't need a CUP, but you're required to have a setback in manure. So, and, oh, I'm gonna have to remember. So Beetle County is three hundred. Even though CUP starts at a thousand, if you've got three hundred, you've gotta have manure management and you have a setback. Brookings County is a hundred. Brown is three hundred. Cottington is eight hundred. They start CUPs at a thousand, but at eight hundred, you still have to have manure management. Davison, five hundred. Lincoln, five hundred. Mini Haha is fifty. And then Turner, I didn't get that listed there. Sorry about that. They were the last county I went to and I ran out of time.
Sure. Davis County starts DE and are permitting at five hundred as well. Do they not?
So I have more details, but I'm giving an overview of where things stand today. So as far as where setbacks begin, Beetle County starts their setbacks at three hundred. So if you are less than three hundred, they have no setbacks. Brookings County at one animal unit is a quarter mile. Brown County, one animal unit, quarter mile. Cottington starts at two hundred animal units, quarter mile. Lincoln is also two hundred animal units, quarter mile. Mini Haha, fifty animal units, is an eighth of a mile. I'm gonna skip, well, Yankton, our first setback starts at three hundred. And Clay starts at one animal unit, which is a quarter. And Turner starts at one animal unit, which is a quarter. Now, as I read through these regulations, they were extremely similar to the current regulations we have in Yankton County. None of them had applying manure on frozen ground. None of them had that. None of them had alerting your neighbors before you apply manure. But all of the other things we have in our current ordinance, all the other counties have. They have setbacks from wells for manure application. They have setbacks from residences, from rights of way, from streams, from personal, personal well, public well, et cetera. They do have those regulations in their ordinance. They're all a little bit different and I didn't mark down where everybody is different on that. I think the important thing to understand is our county is not so much more restrictive than other, the other counties, cuz they all have it to begin with. Some things I, I did notice in Brookings County, which is viewed as a pretty progressive egg county. They did require KFOs to carry insurance. As part of the requirements. They did require, and several counties require this, manure spread agreements to be produced if you didn't own the land. So that had to be tied in. So there's a lot of nuances between several of these counties. Brown listed biofilters may be used. They were the only county I think that actually had the word biofilter in the ones I reviewed. I know there's some smaller counties that do as well. They did have expansion allowances. Some counties allowed for up to five hundred animal unit expansion, as long as you didn't go into a new class. If you didn't currently have a permit. Brookings also required all of them to have environmental training. So that was part of it. And I guess my point here is there's been a lot of comment about how anti-egg Yankton County is. And my point is, if you looked at our ordinance and you compared it to all the other ordinances and took out the setbacks. Because that's where there's some differences. I'll give you that. Setbacks are different. The regulations listed, the guidelines listed to have people have a plan for their KFO are very similar. There are places, like I said, where counties are using special permitted use and mainly it's for those smaller operations. That is, as long as you understand good manure handling and you meet a setback, essentially you come in, you can get a permit to operate. So that's, that's really the, the point that I wanted to touch on. And when I, when I finish, when I'm putting together here, it's in a format that I understand, which isn't always a format everybody else can understand. But I will make sure that Gary has that to put out with all the documents as well. Because where, where I wanted to understand was where do CUPs start? Where does manure management start? Setbacks will fall from that. So, and, and again, most of them has very similar class, like it starts at a thousand, goes to two thousand, two thousand to three thousand, et cetera. The other thing that I did want to touch on, which Don has brought up before. Yankton County has a cap on ten thousand. Clay County has a unique cap. Because after a thousand, they multiply it by five. So every animal has a different cap essentially. None of the other counties did. As far as maximum setbacks. Beetle County has a maximum setback of one and a half miles. So once you reach three thousand animal units, you're at one and a half miles and it stays at that. They have a unique system for graduation, which is pretty interesting. And Brown County has a unique one as well. So Brookings County, the maximum setback's a half mile. For Brown, it continues. So at ten thousand animal units, it's two point three miles. And it continues to ratchet up as you add animals. So there's a factor there that they add in. Cottington maximum is one mile, Davison half mile, Lincoln three quarter mile, Mini Haha three quarter mile. Yankton right now is two. And I don't have one for Clay and Hutchinson. And Turner County actually continues as well. So at ten thousand animal units, you're at a point seven two mile. And then for every thousand animal units, I think they add a hundred feet or something. I can't remember off the top of my head what that is. Turner. I think it's a hundred feet you add for every additional thousand. So it just kind of continues. So a hundred thousand animal, you know, would have a much larger setback. So again, I just wanted to touch on that to give some perspective that our, our county to me, how it stands today, we're not anti-egg with our regulations. We're very similar to what other counties are doing. And how they handle acreage sizes is very different. Because some of them do the concentration like Mini Haha Turner and Lincoln. Very similar. When you read their ordinance, as you can see, they plagiarized each other on those guidelines. But many of the other ones have, have a thirty-five acre. Or now I guess I didn't write it here. That's in, that's in the, the one the zoning office had put through. So and then they do have some exec exemptions for additional family farm unit in the farmstead. That can be. And so I guess the next thing I would do want to cover is my family's a perfect example of exactly what everybody's talking about today. I moved here from Wichita, Kansas, big city. And we bought three quarters of land. So if we look at, and I'm going to pick on you, Chris, a little bit. If we look at your example. Three quarters of four hundred and eighty acres. And we wanted to move there and build a home. So under, under that scenario, I would have to have drawn, because I didn't own a two mile radius or four mile diameter circle. I would have had to convince all the farmers there to give me a waiver to build my home. But if I wanted to build a hog barn. I could build a hog barn across the road from the house that was sitting there that I live across from. But I couldn't build a home on my property. So I could oversee that hog barn. So we have to be careful. And I'm sure when I moved, my family moved to that area, I'm sure we had a lot of looks. A lot of like, hmm, we're going to see how you turn out. And I don't blame them. I really don't. And after 12 years, I hope we've proved that we can live amongst the farmers, even though we're viewed as city folkers. And I grew up on a farm. I think we, we fit into the neighborhood pretty good. So if I want my son to move back and I want to build a place on our acreage, acreage there. Under our current ordinance, I have to sell him twenty acres somewhere so he can build a home. And I'm willing to do that today, you know. So, so again, that's a conversation. Every time something's brought up, I always try and apply it to my situation because I've lived my situation and it's exactly what we're talking about today. Now, could I have been the guy from New York who'd never seen a pig in his life and bought three quarters of land and come out and started complaining? Yeah. But we can't control that. So all the regulations. Think about them applying to you in your situation. Like now, I consider myself a longtime resident of Yankton County, even after 12 years. And I think we fit in our neighborhood pretty good. And I think everybody would say, yeah, we sure like your sons to move back. And we don't want to put up the challenge. So under your scenario, I would have to get sign off from everybody around in two miles for my son to move back. Even if it was two acres, he was going to move on or twenty. So again, every time you propose something, try to poke a hole in it for your own situation. So I've talked a lot right now. We are at eleven. And so I'm going to hand it off to any commissioners who want to speak at this time. You know, we can, we can go four more hours if we want to, but I don't think that's probably wise. So maybe by eleven thirty, we can try to wrap everything up so everyone can have lunch and go home. Handing it off.
I'd like to thank Gary and, and his assistant for putting the matrix together to look at the counties. They
Yes.
They did it in a relatively rapid manner upon request. And I think it gives us a chance to look and, look and compare what both neighboring counties and counties of similar size in the state do. And I would encourage everybody to view that.
No, I think it's hard to see sometimes, but there's some agreement that we did have today and I think people realize that quarter mile setback is not out of line for some of the lower end spectrum. And at the same point, maybe some reduced regulation on the higher end. But it seems like that's something that is common throughout the zoning ordinance. And we've seen some support for that from both sides. So I, I think that's, it's kind of hard to see sometimes, but I, I think there, there is somewhat of an agreement there on that. And so if we could pick that piece out, I think everybody agrees, maybe not what class F is, but there needs to be some sort of setback for the bottom end. And that's one good thing that's happened.
Yes, I'll, I'll
I mean, that's, that's kind of, I mean, that's what I'm hearing anyway. Does anybody in, in the audience, is anybody in support of, of does anybody think a seventy-five foot setback is perfectly fine? I guess raise your hand. Okay, Louis, Louis and Robert think this and Don think seventy, but the majority feels otherwise from what I've, from what I've heard. So. Sure. I'm talking for, for the lower end hog, lower end hog confinement, like the class F. Because and, and I've spoke with Zane. Zane's in support of a quarter mile as well. And I know he's not here. But he's spoken in support of that as well, as well as Mr. Michael.
We're trying to get, I, I don't have a problem with the quarter mile setback for that. The seventy-five foot is, to me, seventy-five foot is from the property line. Okay?
Yes, yes.
And if there's a house on the other side, okay, I can see an issue.
Okay.
If there's not, if it's a beer field, seventy-five feet is more than adequate. That's, that's the part I was
From a, from a residence.
From a residence, I don't have a problem with a quarter mile.
Rob, Robert, residence, a quarter mile, is that too far? Or do you disagree with that? Do you like the seventy-five foot?
I'm, well, the seventy-five foot, I thought you were talking about.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking about residents and I know that it, the, the property lines and other things. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, because.
So you're fine with that, a quarter mile setback?
My, my, mine is all seventy-five foot.
Okay. Okay. So that's a clarification point is from a residence, I think. And you're, you're, you're by yourself or are you, are you okay with that as well?
That'd be where I
Okay. So that's actually a point of agreement, which I think is a big chunk of progress right there.
I do have one other question. When you checked all these other ordinances, and I don't mean to upset Wanda over here. How does Yankton County compare with other counties as far as lawsuits filed?
You know, I, I, I can't answer specifically there, but there are lawsuits. Turner Counties went through their fair share lawsuits. And, and so is Lincoln. And we know up north, there have been lots of lawsuits up north.
I guess I for one would just as soon see a better bridge here and there in the county as I wouldn't another damn lawsuit.
I don't think I like any of the lawsuits that we have to, not just the animal lawsuits, but we've got others as well. So thank you. Um, Joe, did you want to go ahead?
Yeah, maybe you're going there. I don't know. At first I want to thank Chris for sticking his neck out. And putting something on paper. I hope you don't feel you know, criticized or ostracized or whatever. You're going to get questioned from us, from whoever is going to, you know. I appreciate putting something down as a starting point. There's things in there that I certainly agree with and find merit to. There's things that I personally don't agree with, but I, I like that it's out there for discussion. So for for us. What is our direction? What do we want to do?
Joe, that's what I was going to bring up. What's, what's the plan for moving forward? And I jotted down and talked at our last meeting about the, the general areas where we need to come to consensus on. And I had setbacks, lot size, livestock numbers, environmental, right to farm. And probably policing the ordinance. How do we do that? And I guess I would like to have the understanding of what the expectation of this county commission is. My, my assumption is, is that they would like the planning and zoning director and the planning and zoning committee to come up with a proposal based on the information that's been provided to answer those questions. And I would think we need to do that in a relatively short period of time.
I would respectfully disagree with that.
Okay.
And the reason I say that is we what has changed on planning and zoning, I guess. Aside from one member. But we went through, we went through that for a year. We all minus, minus one commissioner as a group decided that we're, we, we ultimately are going to own this, right? We, we're going to be the final say. And I think we can do. I think we can get those things locked down and send it to planning and zoning versus the other way. I would like to continue to get this thing. I'd like it to be ninety-nine percent complete, send it to planning and zoning. There's always going to be suggestions that, that might be like, oh geez, yeah, how'd we miss that? And those can then be incorporated and then sent back. Otherwise I see it going to planning and zoning and then back to here and then back to planning and zoning and then back to here. And I mean, we've
Isn't that the way it should be?
I, I think
How many times though?
I think Joe's point is it that there's key areas we need to decide on before it gets sent back to planning and zoning. To me, that's how do we handle the residents in the county? We need, we need to give a decision on that. Because if the planning commission does it, they already kind of did it once and we squelched it. And so that's not productive. So I think that because it's a, it's a, the most controversial issue we have in front of it, front of us is lot size. And people moving to the rural areas. So we need to decide how to handle that. And they might figure out the tiny language. We can put it down on paper. This is it. And they tweak the language, but, but that's a huge issue. We need to decide where conditional uses start. And where permitted uses or special permitted uses are allowed if we want them. So those need to be decided and setbacks. The other details around things are what goes back and forth, like are we going to require them to notify their neighbor, they're spreading manure on Friday? That can go back and forth. It, do we need to keep that in the ordinance? It's in there today. Do we need to keep that in the ordinance? So those are the details, but we've got some big hitters that these five people need to decide and say, there's your direction. Make it look pretty. And I don't want to demean that last thing, but we can't keep going back and forth until this, because we're the final say. And then it's probably going to be petitioned no matter what to the public. But by doing that, the public has a fuller conversation about the changes we're making. So when they do go to cast a ballot, they can either vote with confidence or they can say those hooligans don't know what they're doing. I'm voting no.
And I think just to tee a little bit off of that is one, I think we do need to assume whatever we send for proposal may be on the ballot. And so we need to make sure that we feel it has a large success of passing. But two. I, I just think we need to get these big ticket items. Particularly setbacks, lot sizes, things of that nature. Lockdown. We just got a big raise this year. And and the planning and zoning members, I mean truly are, are volunteering their time and efforts. And I think it's a lot to ask to to do the back and forth over and over and over without, you know, really locking things down. Or getting, giving a very clear understanding of, of how we may feel up here.
You know, our, our zoning ordinance, you know, as it sits, and I think this thing that Sherri, you and Gary did is eye opening is, is we're really not that different from any other county that's close. I mean, we are different. Some of the other concerns I've heard is, and you know, this isn't to be negative, but zoning in, i- is difficult to understand. Most people don't pick up Most people don't pick up a zoning ordinance and read it every day. So I guess I'm an advocate for simplicity. And I'm wondering if we can't get similar results that we all say we want with just a few tweaks to the zoning ordinance, you know, that we have now. And I, I really appreciate the work that has been done with the manure classes and all that stuff. And I, I think it's good system. But how are we going to regulate? I mean, we'll definitely have to hire another person in the zoning office. If we're gonna do that, and if we're gonna do special permitted uses and all that. We'll definitely have to hire a code enforcer, which actually was authorized, I think, several years ago. And who's gonna do that job? Who's gonna do a code enforcer? We'll have to pay somebody sixty thousand dollars a year to be the guy going out to everybody's property and telling them, you need to do this. This is gonna be, that, that'd be a terrible job, I sure wouldn't want it. And so I'm wondering if we can't strike a compromise here from, from what we're hearing. And, uh, do a quarter-mile setback on, on Class Fs. It sounds like people don't want to go to the two acres. Maybe we bump it up to, just throwing out number here, five acres, ten acres. Leave it at that. And, and that solves the majority of problems. I, I'm, I'm a proponent for keeping the conditional use permit process. And when I look at, the reason why I say that is when we spoke with the Planning Commission, there was some talk about changing a public park to a, to a permitted use. And the Planning Commission and members, some of them which are here now, said, it's not that we're against a park. We just want to know what's happening in our neighborhood through a meeting. That's what they said, and I guess I respect that, so. I think we could make some real progress here with a few simple changes that address the problems that we've had. And I guess I would be a proponent of something like that. I have an example up here, I guess.
You want this?
Yes. What's that? Yeah, could you pull that up for me? So this is what we have right now. Nobody wants, few people want two acres, nobody wants ten acre, or twenty acres. Is ten a compromise? I don't know, but it's something to look at and consider. Class F, everybody here is talking about, um, you know, moving that to a quarter-mile. We could do that. You know, we could, we could just leave this as it is now, Class F, put a quarter-mile right there. You know, this is a little bit different than what I have, but that'd be something to have. Should we bump these up a little bit? If Class F is a quarter-mile, which everybody agrees on, should Class E be then a half a mile? I don't know. Class F and E probably shouldn't be the same.
So. Why shouldn't they be the same?
Well, because it, it deals with, it, you're dealing with two hundred and forty animal units, for example, or three hundred animal units versus, you know, nine hundred and sixty animal units. So it's much larger.
Miles?
What's that? No, we're at, no, this is how it is right now.
Oh, okay.
So I'm, I'm actually not touching A or B, and we could not touch C, there, I'd be fine with that. But Class F has no setback right now. I would propose quarter-mile. I'd propose Class E go to a half a mile, because it is a quarter-mile now. Class D is also a quarter-mile. We could leave that at three-quarters or leave it at a half. And everything else is the exact same. So, be something to consider. There'd be a lot less, there'd be a lot less, uh, changes. Everybody's familiar with our zoning ordinance now. Go to, go to ten acres, go to a quarter-mile on Class F, leave everything else alone, and we're done. And it would solve ninety-nine percent of the problems that we have.
Beetle County.
Be done, we could be done in a month.
Beetle County has, as I recall, two classes, A and B. That simplifies almost all the problems that we talk about. In, in normal livestock operations, it's very difficult to keep a number of three hundred or five hundred or seven hundred. You might sell or buy, uh, at any one point in time would be considerably, uh, off. Cow cap operation, the whole, the whole thing. Two, two classifications make it far simpler. Now, the, the size of those may not be what Beetle, uh, represents, but, uh, maybe, maybe we should have different sizes, but I'd be a proponent for two, to simplify things, to have two classifications.
So to tee off on that, Don, how they handle the setbacks for that is they have a little formula, and they use two-point-six-four is essentially their factor. So at three hundred, you take three hundred times two-point-six-four, that's your setback. And that is the case. And when you get to a thousand, you're at a half-mile. Thousand times two-point-six-four is a half-mile. So essentially, they use that up until they reach one and a half miles, and after that, that's their maximum setback. So, CUP begins at a thousand, where manure starts at three hundred. But they don't have any setback for one to two ninety-nine. Nothing at all. And I think that's where Mini Haha added theirs in at six hundred and sixty feet to get down to fifty. And anything under fifty, I would, you know, you've got a barn with three horses in it or something like that, there is no setback for that. So, just to expand on your comment.
The way the industry's going too, and you know this, is, you know, modern agriculture, barns, even cattle are going to deep pit barns or monoslope barns. And that has a set number of animals in it. Somebody who has a twenty-four-hundred-head hog barn isn't gonna put twenty-eight-hundred-head in there, it's a set number. So when they build that operation, you know, that's where they go for the setback. And, and we have in our ordinance right now that, and, uh, a place is allowed to expand by three hundred animal units. That's already in our ordinance, and I would propose to keep that. But the, you know, somebody's not gonna have a twenty-four-hundred-head barn and go to three thousand and then go back down. It's a set number, and it's the same with the newer cattle barns. There might be a little more fluctuation with cattle, but I don't foresee them.
Dan, I, I, one.
Feedlot would be different.
One, one point of difference on this, uh, you, you raised that point, uh, I think, last week, and, and, uh, I have an acquaintance that, uh, praises catalyzed facilities pretty much all over the United States. And I asked him what percent of those operations are in confined, open, uh, with pits under them? And he, he said, well, probably less than one percent. And they'd all be in the north.
Is that in South Dakota, though, or?
Nationwide.
Okay, well, the, the trend in South Dakota that I'm seeing, and it might be different nationwide, is we, a lot of cattle are going to the deep pit barns.
People can put up the buildings and.
It's a lot less labor.
The beginning farmer doesn't have a chance, because he can't afford that kind of facility.
Need a depreciation.
Yeah, well.
You can't afford, if you can't afford to get the capital to put it up, you don't have to worry about the depreciation.
So that exact discussion right there is the reason when I saw the separation of manure classes, why it caught my attention. Because feedlots are, are operated completely different than housed animal units. And that, and I know maybe that adds, uh, one degree of confusion, but to me, it's very simple. If you come in and you are gonna put in a, a deep pit facility, you're basically locked into those number of animal units, and you can, you know, plan accordingly. If you're a, a feedlot, you are gonna fluctuate quite a bit on the number of head that you feed or cow cap fair operations.
And why do they do that, Joe? Exactly, they do that because they buy based on the price of the market, and they sell on a basis of price of market, and there can be an overlap on that.
Right, and, but, so my point is to have an ordinance that treats two separate, different styles of management the same, just isn't. I think we have opportunity to, to separate those and to treat them and make the, make it, I, I really think in the long run, it makes it easier on the producer. I, I just do, and I don't think, I don't think what is proposed adds restriction, it's taken out a lot, we've put in. And there's definitely work that can be done, but as a starting point, there's some protections for residents or for CAFO producers against rev, residents and new residents and allowing for expansion. We took out some of the, um, manure management and manure application guidelines that really, there's no teeth to, and really are just a, a PTA and not a, a real thing. And we raised that, that threshold for CUPs to five hundred animal units. So I think this, like I say, can have some work to do, but I think it, it is doing a lot of the things that are asked, and, and we're not straying too far from where we're at today.
One question is, so we're gonna, we're gonna not require a CUP for smaller CAFOs, but we're gonna require them for a golf course and a kennel and light manufacturing, a park, a gravel pit? I guess, why, why does a gravel pit require a CUP but a five-hundred-head CAFO dozen? And why, why, as a rural resident, why don't I deserve to know what's going on in my neighborhood?
So just to address a couple, this is my personal belief, I think at a certain point, and I've had, at a certain point, I mean, this is an ag district, and at a certain point, a farm is a farm is a farm, and there's livestock involved. At, at whatever that point is where the line's drawn, that is when you, uh, maybe are the size that you operate outside of what would be typically found i- in a livestock operation. And to me, it's no different than, you know, I remember asking Zane, uh, grain elevators. I asked him what, what the difference is between my grain bins and a grain elevator, and he said, well, you store somebody else's grains. I said, okay, what if I'm, what if I'm feeding out somebody else's livestock? I got ten thousand heads sitting here, and I don't own one of them, isn't that a commercial operation? And so, there's a threshold where you change from, and we have to pick that number, but where you change from your typical, let's call it a father-son operation or father-daughter operation, to where you, for lack of better terms, upset, upset the landscape of what people who have farmed in that area are, are accustomed to, and I know that's changing.
And it's also, it's also the concentration of the resource. Whereas you look at one hog barn, my understanding is you need about four hundred acres for a finisher barn. Roughly, two hundred this year, two hundred next year, so I back and forth. So a finisher barn sitting on a section of land has a certain impact, whereas if you had ten finisher barns sitting on that same site, that's a much larger impact. And you certainly aren't gonna be hauling the manure out to the backfield. You're hauling that manure further from the site, and you'll have a much larger impact. The concentration of the aroma, et cetera. It's no different than the city of Yankton has many different regulations versus the city of Utica. Because they have a lot more people. Utica does not, so the regulations even under state law are different. So the question, as Joe said, is where is that line? At what point do we feel we need to ensure more things are monitored? The state, the state has drawn their line at a thousand. So they have a line, it's just that here, where do we think our line needs to be for a conditional use?
Okay, uh, we're four minutes before, before your projected close sign. Uh, I've heard this commission say that they don't want the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, and Gary to work on, uh, an Article Five revision until this commission has resolved, uh, several of the major items to it. What's our plan?
So I, I would suggest we have another meeting, two, and we come, um, five commissioners discuss those big ticket items. So just as that, at what point do we need a CUP? And that's one thing, we discuss it, we hash it out, and we put that on paper, and that's direction to the Planning Commission. And so then, from there falls, how do we do the setbacks? You know, do we do it certain classes, get this setback, or do we do it like, um, Beetle's doing? Where you just essentially start with a point and, and you just scale it up from there, and you put a cap on it. So that's another discussion.
That, at this point in time, Joe's presentation, uh, his, his suggestions, Chris's, uh, suggestions, we wouldn't utilize those until we've answered the major questions.
I think so.
And then we'd hand that to the Planning and Zoning team and say, come up with a overall.
Yes, you know, because a part of that, planning and zoning discussion is going to be, you know, honestly, our ordinance is a little confusing. And I, like I said, I read seven or eight yesterday, and some of them are pretty confusing too, but some of them did a nice job of organizing. Chris did a nice job of organizing exactly going through, and I think the document, um, that focused on trying to reorganize it did a pretty good job of doing that as well. So I would think the Planning Commission could take those models and then input in the key information.
So we need to decide on the key points and, and not get on all of these sidebar discussions.
Yes.
That's what we need to do.
I think that's where, the high level where we need to start.
We absolutely need to get with the key points, and I wouldn't have any problem maybe not getting to the nitty-gritty, but selecting the format, whether it's something more like Chris's or like what's presented, or take some of Chris's and put in, but not totally lock it in, but say, this is kind of what we'd like to see, because I, you know, to Dan's.
Well, we got an expert here. We got an expert, and that's his job. We provide the guidance, he, he writes it up.
I wouldn't want to put that on his back, that's our decisions to make, and we haven't made any of them yet.
You didn't hear what I said, Dan. We, we make the decisions on the major points.
Yes, I can agree with that.
To put it together.
Right.
Whether they use Joe's or Chris's.
Or something totally different or a combination, right, yeah.
Gary can do that, he's an expert at it.
Very efficient, too. So, it, the question becomes, it is eleven-thirty, when do we meet next?
Well, uh, we talked about having this kind of wrapped up by May or June, late May, early June.
Yep, I heard June last time.
We need, we need to get on it, we need to have a meeting in the next week or so.
What days are good?
Well, I'm probably the busiest of all of us. And I can do it, I think, any day next week.
See, I, I think we should, you know, post the proposals and all that stuff on, online, and give, give the public some time to. and give, give the public some time to digest a little bit as well.
The one proposal's been up for.
Well, I, I.
Six months?
Six months.
What I'm, what I'm saying, though, is, is, you know, we couldn't rush into it too much.
The proposals don't have anything to do, right.
With the key items. And that's exactly right. And everybody in this community knows their line in the sand. It's not gonna take two months for anybody in this community to know their line in the sand. So I'd say we can meet anytime. So within the next two weeks, for sure.
Next, are we meeting Friday again? Because the next two Fridays I have booked up already.
And we can, we can do a, an evening meeting, too.
Planning and zoning Tuesday, next Tuesday?
Yes, tonight.
Would, any evening next week work for anybody? I could do just about any of them.
They work for me every night with planning and zoning.
I can do any evening. I'm open any evening.
I, I have the library board, and I got.
On what day?
On Wednesday. And then I have another meeting on Thursday. Then I have something Friday. I can do the, I could probably do.
So Monday or Wednesday?
I could probably do the 17th.
Oh, Monday's too short.
In the evening.
The evening of the 17th?
Evening of the 17th.
What day is the 17th?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Okay.
Monday is, the court also is closed. Next Monday?
Oh, it is February. Yep.
Or the next Monday, I'm sorry.
Well, it, I, skipping the library board would be probably okay.
I, you're, actually, we're talking about some major stuff, and I would not want to do that.
What time is it?
Actually.
Yeah, what time do they meet?
Uh, they meet at 5:30.
Well, we could meet at 7:00.
I, I also got kids and homework and tons of stuff that.
I don't want to be real selfish, but I'd like to be done before I'm out spreading fertilizer and planting.
I, I'm really booked up. I said I can do the 17th. That's really, you know, these, these special meetings that we're, we're doing, you know, I, I want to be a part of them, but it kind of takes some planning, too. I have my days set out for thi, this commission and then the other obligations that I have that I have to go to from the county commission. So.
Well, this has been a very, this has been a very important issue, and we need to get it resolved. We, we have indicated to Mr. Jensen that we had the plan to work on it and get it resolved. It takes time to do it. And if we keep pushing it back, we won't meet, we won't meet our, so I'd, I'd, I'd say we need to have it sooner than later.
I would say a meeting after the library board meeting was probably our best option. So what day was that?
That's my wife's birthday, too, actually, that.
Now you're getting into.
No, I mean, you know what? We have Saturdays as well.
I mean, are we gonna make the staff and Patty come in and Valley come in on Saturday and Gary come in on Saturday? Come on. This has been three years we've been doing with this. But.
I don't get comp time.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, that's not, I don't think that's a good idea. That's asking a lot of.
Be ready to discuss when we get to this meeting.
So we need to.
Are we gonna hammer all of them? Are we gonna?
I would, you know what? I'd like to try and hammer them all out. And I think the, where a CUP begins, are we gonna do the special permitted uses at some level? We need to discuss the setbacks associated, and certainly the lot sites. Those are, those are the foremost controversial issues. And once those are decided, things fall out from there.
So what day is not your wife's birthday and will work?
Uh, the 17th is the, the date. 17th of February.
So next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday is.
That's two weeks.
That's two weeks. Well, that's two weeks. Well, today's, what's today, the 5th?
Well, then, if we're gonna wait that long, then what I would suggest we do is make, make a mandatory decision that all issues are addressed. May not be resolved, but all issues are addressed.
Yep, absolutely, Don. Because it, we'll get to that meeting and then we'll say, well, we need another meeting and.
So when's our next regular meeting? Two weeks?
16th.
16th. So why don't we do it next week and not those, I mean, otherwise we'll be doing back-to-back meetings.
Yeah.
One on Tuesday, one on Wednesday.
Yep.
Why don't we do one next week?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do.
Planning and zoning is on.
Tuesday.
The 9th on Tuesday. So.
Did we throw out Monday?
Monday's a holiday.
No, that's a week.
The week ago.
Oh, yeah. I, I said Monday, we could do Monday as long as we get the notice in the paper coming up.
I, that doesn't work. Monday doesn't work for me.
Earlier, you said Monday you were open.
That was.
The following week, I think.
But that's, that's Valentine's Day and President's Day.
No, Valentine's Day is on Sunday.
Yeah.
Or the next week.
We're talking next week.
Monday, the 8th.
Can't do it. Thursday, I can't. I, I'm, have a, I'm on the NACO board for veterans issue, and I have a zoo beating at 6 o'clock for that.
Well, we could do it at 7:00.
What about the 10th?
They usually last quite a bit longer than that. The 10th is my wife's birthday, and I have the library board meeting that day.
I, I, I don't have a problem with waiting until the 17th if it works for Dan. But I think we have to agree that we're not gonna start bringing up issues that have been discussed for five years. We're gonna get to the meeting of the 7th and make some decisions on all the issues.
So February 17th at 6:00 PM, everything's done.
Encourage everybody to come with their ideas, ready, we're talking reasons why, and hopefully not so dug in that we can't make any progress.
Yes, and it will be a discussion amongst commissioners.
That's right. We.
We need to, to limit. Certainly, everybody's welcome to come listen, but at this point, we've had a couple meetings taking public comment. I think we know where people stand. And it's up to us to find resolution.
To be fair, the first meeting was in a blizzard, and then this one is at 9 o'clock when most people are.
And we had public meetings all last year with planning. We had public meetings at the commission level last year when we reviewed the first introduction of changes. So this is not something new to our county. And there's two weeks from today that everybody can contact all of us. But if we don't, if we don't make ourselves make a decision, a decision will not be made. So with that, we are at the end of the meeting, and I'll open it up for a final public comment period for folks who want to have three minutes. Would anyone like to make a public comment? All right, no comments. Public comments closed. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
6 o'clock.
6:00.
Yeah.
Second.
So I have a motion by Fox, second by Healy, to adjourn for the discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you.